We're going to open the September 30th Board of Selectmen's meetings. The meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable TV and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have minutes to approve of September 23rd.
Minutes to approve.
Seconded.
No comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a...under correspondence, we have a letter of appreciation to Charlie Kupfer of Stockbridge Construction Company for graffiti removal on the DCR dam house in Berlin.
Oh, thank you.
thanking them for their hard work in removing the graffiti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I drove by this evening. I looked every time I was down Linden. Still good.
They didn't get all the cat.
Yeah. They got off what they needed to get off.
All right, general public comment. Are there any questions, comments? All righty. Um, we did...oh, there it is.
Yeah.
We did post our public comment guidelines in the room. Anyone, you need to take a look at some point. Hearings and appointments and presentations. Um, it's not quite 7:15. So, and we have no department updates today, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do you want to do your town administrator report or start the interviews?
Do you want to do the Green Communities Grant? Or is it...
More questions and comments? Because you know I have three.
You might have more by the end of the meeting.
I might have more than, more than three, but I have three written down.
Uh, well, do you want to ask one of them right now, at least?
Okay. To Margaret.
Okay, I'm ready.
Any update from Maya on insurance, what we might need to do for a potential program with the high school kids?
I don't have any update from Maya. We have contacted Maya, but I have not yet received an update from them. I am familiar with the forms that we'd need to put in place as far as waivers of liability and things like that, but I'll stay on Maya. Well, they just switched risk managers. We actually just met her the other day, but we didn't, we weren't able to delve into that. So, I'll follow up with them.
All right, no worries.
All right, you got another one that's quick?
I do. Um, so it actually prompted, something prompted last week when I was down here with Mary. A gentleman came in looking for the building commissioner's office. So, you know, we had to get up, walk out, give him directions. I don't know if AsaBET does it, and obviously I know that we'll need to work with the building commissioner, facilities, but is it possible to reach out to them to maybe have some graphic design signage done down the hallway to say assessor, building commissioner, just so that people know and maybe do something to the sign downstairs? Because even the UPS guy had no idea where to go when I saw him on the way out.
Mm-hmm. We, there was actually some back and forth right after I got here about putting signs, the ones that extend out to the hallway, so when you're walking down the hall, you can see which office is which.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can follow up on that.
I'm sure AsaBET does do that. I'm sure they do.
I mean, if they can do these.
The one that has the number that's just downstairs in an obvious case.
Correct.
Okay.
Margaret, I'll follow up with it. You don't need to do that.
Honestly, Amazon.
Yeah. But if they can do it and maybe slap on their little logo designed by AsaBET, something, something, that gives them some recognition as well?
Yeah.
The problem is if you change rooms or if you...
So, then maybe we...
Because these rooms have numbers.
So, then maybe we just say accounting, building commissioner, town administrator.
Something that could be removable, so if the, yeah, if the building space is ever looked at and there's some moving around, those would be interchangeable.
All right, so talk to facilities, is there a specific height, weight, length, size, how they're going to go up in the ceiling?
I would think that they could be...
Is that a Dave or is that a...
That would be Dave.
That's a Dave question?
Yeah, and they had been talking, the people here, the staff that was, were involved in the conversation, I think, were talking, correct me if I'm wrong, were talking about signs that actually mount to the wall above your door and actually stick out into the hallway. So, they'd be well above and you could actually see the names of the rooms.
Like, I, you know, not too high.
Not too high, but, yeah, that they'd mount in the wall. So...
Above the door is what we were talking, but we have to find out what's ADA compliant because a lot of them have Braille on them. So...
Mm-hmm, the ones that are outside the doors now have Braille.
All right.
So, we were trying to see what was allowable and what wasn't.
All right, well, let me, I'll get in touch with the superintendent or the principal at AsaBET and say, hey, we're thinking, do you do this? What do you need? Do you want to come over? And then we can go from there. Okay, cool.
If there is a Braille component, I, I would think that they wouldn't be capable of doing that.
But we could do signs and Braille that could supplement those, so, yeah.
I'll ask. Okay, all right, I'll take that one for you.
You can see what's available at AsaBET, too.
Yeah, I don't know what they do.
Right.
I mean, that's just it. I mean, we're probably under utilizing a very good technical vocational school that's right around the corner that could do some of the stuff that we need.
Maybe we could invite AsaBET representatives to come to our board's meeting just to talk about their programs.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
All right, I will inquire on that one, too.
All right.
Look at that.
Hey.
All right. Um, Mary, could you ask Richard to come in?
Yeah.
Good evening, long time no see.
Chair of honor.
This is my chair.
That is your chair.
We finally finished the questions.
Okay. Sorry about that.
All right. We have nine questions. Um, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about yourself first or just delve in?
Well, we can delve in.
Okay. All right, well, I have the first two questions. What are the key skills needed to be a building commissioner?
In a small town like this, you need to be, have some good experience and you have to have compassion, you have to be able to understand the makings of the town and, and how it works. You need to be able to work with people.
Anything else you didn't want to elaborate or you're good?
Again, um, you know, you, you need to be able, be able to work with the people and do the best you can, make sure you uphold the bylaws of the town as, as well.
What are your thoughts on the role of the building commissioner in providing guidance to contractors and homeowners?
Like I said, it kind of goes along with what I was saying is that it's just, I think it's important that, my role is to help, not, not hinder, try to get, get people through the process as best as possible, educate them where it, where it needs to be, where it needs to happen. Uh, over my, in Townsend as an example, four years in a row, I, I held an educational workshop for contractors on energy code training because I found in our area over there that the contractors weren't getting the education that he want, he didn't, in the new stretch codes and stuff like that. So, I sponsored four years in a row, different energy code trainings for the residential and the commercial. So, it's, to me, it's all about, again, letting everybody know what the latest greatest thing is coming out, coming along, so that they can make a better choice when they decide on how they, how they want to build or what they want to build.
Okay, thank you. Peg, you have the next one?
So, hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Could you tell us about a particularly challenging professional project that you've had to confront as a building commissioner? How did you handle it and what did you learn?
Challenging, as in zoning or isn't it to...
It could be anything. It could be zoning, it could be in your role as building commissioner slash inspector. So, kind of tell us about a time that was probably one of the more difficult ones that you've gone through. What did you learn? How did you get through it? What did you do with it?
Um, one on zoning was a, a commercial buil, business that was operating in a residential neighborhood and that particular one ended up going all the way to Superior Court with injunction against it. Um, it was a very challenging one. It's actually, to this day, it still has some repercussions going on as to what the outcome ended up being. Uh, there was injunction against the person that was running the business. Um, you know, they were just trying to make a living, but their small business outgrew their residential neighborhood. Um, so, to this day, the, the neighbor that abuts these people is still not satisfied with the injunction, so that's still, for the last 20 years, you still get complaints that, I don't think they're living up to the agreement, I don't think they're living up to your judgment. And so, it's, it's still a continual of, okay, follow up, are they compliant or not? Uh, that particular went back to Superior Court for contempt two times after the injunction. So, it's, again, it's one of those ones that just keeps rolling down the street and keeps going.
So, what'd you do, what did you learn through the process? Would you have done any, looking back now, because obviously it's always easy to look back and say, oh, I wish I had.
One of the things I would have done different on that one, and I was relatively new at it, I'd only been in town for about a year. I took the strong advice of town council that to, to bend on the court judgment, the judge gave an injunction, the judge, so, so the judge wanted both parties to try and work something out. Against my better judgment, the town council came up with what she thought was the best agreement, but looking back at it, it really wasn't. It's something that's very hard to enforce, it's very hard to keep track of. You're constantly, you know, the, the neighbor will call and say they've, they violated because of this. Well, by the time you get there, well, they're not, they're not there, you know? So, it was, it was just one of those things, you're just going to keep a handle on. Moving forward, in retrospect, I would have went for just full compliance without any agreement of, of letting them have any leeway. You know, the town council at the time thought that, well, you know, cut them some slack because they've been operating there already and, you know, it's, it's only minor what they're doing. And my, and my gut instinct was, no, I, I think they should be held right to the, to the letter. And again, it just keeps, year after year, springtime comes and they, the business picks up a little bit and the neighbor calls and complains. So, for 20 years, I get the same constant complaints.
Okay. All right, Lisa.
The department in position have been going through a period of growth and change to align with greater needs from the community. This includes simple changes such as uniforms and larger ones such as management of multiple staff members, including plumbing and wiring inspectors who have been somewhat independent. Can you tell us about your management budgeting experience and share some ideas you might have for continuing to move the department in a direction that will meet the needs of a small but complex community?
Sure. Um, I've been doing budgeting for 22 years in, in my, in my other town, so I work hand in hand with the other inspectors to find out what they have upcoming for needs, when it's kind, comes time for doing their budgets, I ask them what they have upcoming for upcoming trainings. And the tricky part with budgeting for them is if you use a wire inspector, for example, every three years, he has a new code cycle that comes out, so he needs to take classes and buy new books. But that's a year and a half out beyond the budget season, so it's, you know, because budgets start July, but he's like a cycle out, so, so it's a little challenge to keep ahead of everybody, make sure that all their needs are taken care of. Um, you're right that, you know, that the inspectional services is growing constantly. Um, like you said, you want to try and build a professional looking department, whether it be with the uniforms. I see that, that the inspectors do have uniforms, which is a good plus. Uh, they, they, you do have now online permitting, which has been working out really good so far. So, that's, that's been a big plus as well.
Okay, Peg.
Actually, Lisa, can you take six, because I want to rewrite five, because he kind of answered it in three.
Okay.
How's that for code?
All right, we're going to do number six then.
All right. The town of Berlin is currently going through a phase of intense commercial building. Please speak to your specific experience with these types of large-scale commercial inspections, your thoughts on how to manage them, and how you determine staffing needs. These periods tend to be cyclical. How do you balance current needs with planning for a potential future downturn?
Very good question. So, as far as inspections and, and in my experience, I've done three different school buildings, I've done three fire stations, I've done a police station, senior center, the library complex, and highway garage, so I, I'm vastly educated in all the realms of what could possibly come through to you. Uh, plumbing complexes, elderly housing projects, so as far as the level of expertise and inspections and so on and so forth, I'm well versed on all that. Uh, you're right, you, you, uh, things are going to, are going to come in cycles. Um, you know, if you take this plumbing complex you've got going on right now, it's, it's coming and going in waves. So, all of a sudden, they're looking for all kinds of inspections and then it backs off, then, so it keeps ramping up and down. Looking forward, um, you do have a local inspector on the books, so as, as a part-time person, that needs to be evaluated yearly as to what needs or what level that person's going to need to be in that role. Uh, right now, we've been managing with the limited resources. Uh, that person's doing a great job so far. Um, he's been doing it on a, on a, on a as-needed basis, um, but I do see that needing to ramp up slightly. Um, that's something that would have to be discussed with the board as to what level of hours that they would expect. I realize this falls under the decision of the building commissioner, but we need to look at the whole long-range goal of what is coming and where is, where are the trends going? Is there a need for that much staffing? Um, I think there was budget for a full-time person as a local inspector, and I don't see a full-time person in that role, just from what I've observed so far.
Okay. Ready for five?
I am, thank you, going backwards. Thank you for allowing me that leeway. What's been your greatest accomplishment? You've had many years of doing this, so if you could summarize it into...
No, geez, they're...
I'll give you two. Your greatest accomplishments.
As far as a project or just in general or...
In general, could be a project.
Um, I think, I think the greatest accomplishment is just bringing stability to different places I've, I've been to. As you see, I've been alternate inspectors or interim inspectors in different communities to help out, and that's always given me a good sense of pride and accomplishment that I can go in, try to organize and straighten them out, keeping them, keeping them afloat while they're searching for their, their next commissioner. So, that's always given me good pride to be able to, be able to get in, see how a lot of people do things and be able to pick it up and keep it going. Um, as far as projects go, I think probably the, the best one that I've had was the new senior center, senior library center complex that we built over in Townsend, which was actually a gift to Townsend. So, that was, um, it was, it was a donation by a, by a company in Townsend that, and that was a fun project. That was, unlike most projects, there was no money, no money, no expense spared, so the...
That makes it fun.
The benefactor was able to pick and choose wherever he wanted, and that was a great, that was a fun project.
Oh, thank you.
All right, is it my turn?
No, that's me.
It's your turn.
Back to me. What prompted you to pick this profession?
Um, well, I was a builder for quite a few years and I got hurt a few times on a job, and when you're laid up on the sofa and you're trying to, you can't go to work because you're injured, and so I started rethinking my whole life and I realized that, well, you know, is, is your body going to hold up to your age of social security? And I honestly answered, no. So, so then I started taking college classes and I was going to become an engineer, so I was on the path of engineering, I was taking all the math and science classes. But with a wife and, and small kids and still running my construction business 50, 60 hours a week, it was really daunting. I was taking two classes semester plus homework. So, I took an aptitude test to find out what my strong likes and dislikes are, and it showed that I should be a carpenter or I should be a police officer or someone that helps people. So, so then I started thinking about what, what other profession could I do that I'm already familiar with, which was building, so that I thought that maybe I would become a building official instead. So, I took all my college books and put them aside, and I went and bought all the code books I could think I would need, and I would just read code from cover to cover. I had a lot of good times, I could fall asleep by doing that. But at the time, my, my son was, was in the band, and so I'd go watch him play, and I would just be laying on the lawn, reading book, reading code from cover to cover, and, and then I took, took my test and obviously passed, and then landed a job in Townsend. So, that's how I ended. It was, it was a conscious decision to stop with the highly physical domain and stuff and go, stay, stay with what I like, being in the construction field, seeing, seeing the projects, seeing how the things are changing.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, with the ongoing changes in the construction industry, how do you keep your knowledge current? Besides laying in the grass and reading codebooks?
Besides that. So, I'm a member of different building official groups, so, so I go to the monthly meetings, there's two different ones per month. I'm also on the Mass Federation Building Officials, which is an organization that was set up to pull all the major building official groups together, so that you'd have, we'd have one voice as building officials with the state. So, I've been on the Mass Federation Building Officials, so, so I see the latest, greatest things that are coming through as far as laws or codes that may be affecting our profession. So, stuff like that, and UMass usually, once a year, has a, a week-long training, I typically go to that. So, so I, I try to do a lot of continuing ed. We're required to do 45 hours of continuing ed in a three-year cycle. I'm using the $120, the $160 range for the different things I take.
Okay, Lisa.
Um, the building department installed new online permitting software recently that includes iPads for remote use, and department management requires experience with software such as Microsoft Office. What is your comfort level with technology?
It's been fine. Again, I've been working with your online permitting, it's been simple, it's been easy. We have the online, we have the tablets to take on the field, as you said, and then reviewing the permits online. Um, all the inspectors are up and running with them. Uh, we all got trained at the same time on the, on the tablets. We all hit the road running, it's been really fine.
Is there anything else you'd like to add or have any questions for us?
Uh, I don't know what questions, but I just want to say it's been a privilege to be here for the last six, seven months, whatever, and then two months prior a few years ago. So, so I've learned a lot, it's, it's a great community, it's a growing community, but it still has the road charm, and that's what I like. I still like to, um, I don't think I'd want to be in the city dealing with all the issues that go along with a city, but the town's a, is still a small, manageable town.
Well, I think I say on behalf of the board that we really have appreciated you coming in and stepping up and, and helping out.
Well, thank you for that.
Agreed, seconded.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
Am I free to go?
You are free to go.
Good day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. All right, is our other candidate out here?
Yes.
Okay. Can we keep track of what we did here? I guess.
Do you want to know?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Wasn't it 7:30?
Five.
Oh. He's here.
This is Mark Dupell.
Yeah, do, do you want to share anything else? Introduction or, I guess he could do that.
Oh, we can ask, yeah, we can ask, yeah.
Yeah, they're just chit-chatting out there. Hi.
How you doing?
How you doing? Come on up.
Mark, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
Hi, Mark, I'm Peg.
Hi, Mark, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Lisa.
Hi, Mark, nice to meet you.
Hello, Mr. Dupell, I met you.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
It's a tough crowd, I heard a lot of laughing when I was...
Yeah, we're, we're pretty easy. Um, and we've read your resume, and I don't know if there's anything you want to share or do you want to just dive right into questions?
Dive right into questions, please.
All right. Um, I have the first two. What are the key skills needed to be a building commissioner?
Key skills? Um, a little bit of patience, um, because you deal with a lot of issues sometimes with the public and with contractors. Education and experience.
Um, what are your thoughts on the role of the building commissioner in providing guidance to contractors and homeowners?
Um, I think it's a big role. It's a changing world and a lot more homeowners are doing their own stuff, they've seen the TV shows, they think they can do a lot of things. So, you have to guide them, and, and it's not hard to guide them, and you, you want to guide them because they're just trying to learn, they want to, they intend to do the right thing. They're not trying to squeak by. They intend to do the right thing, they just don't know. Same thing with contractors, a lot, you have the old-time contractors that have been around for years, have been doing it a certain way their whole life, and it doesn't mean it's the wrong way, it's just the old way. And you have a new batch of contractors coming up, the next generation, which are more technical-savvy and work smarter, not harder. So, it's a big role.
Thank you. Peg.
Uh, so, tell us about a particularly challenge, challenging professional project or situation we've had to, that you've confronted being a business commissioner or build a big, wow.
Did I apply for the wrong job?
Yeah, you did. It's down the hall, to the left, down the stairs, back up. All right, let's try this again. There we go. Uh, please tell us about a particularly challenging professional project or situation where you've been as a building commissioner. How did you handle it and what did you learn through it?
The biggest challenge I have is actually right now in the town I'm currently working in, there's a, a big apartment complex that's going on and, um, it's probably not going as smooth as it could be, and the pressures of people that want it done now and the pressures of contractors that want to get finished and out of there, and the neighborhood that didn't, never wanted it in the first place, it, it's a fine balance. And it's kind of challenging because you try to keep everybody happy at the same time and still get compliance and get it done right. But sometimes there's a lot of people that, that aren't happy with you. And I don't want to say too more specific because it gives away a lot of stuff.
All right, we'll leave it...
But is there anything you've learned from that?
Yeah, general, general. What have you learned from it? Would you do anything differently?
Well, I came into, I took over the project sort of halfway through. What I've learned is nothing goes to plan, and, um, what I would do different is maybe take the reins a little earlier and, and try to have a little more control and keep the chaos low right from the beginning, and it might not be such a...
Curfuffle.
That's a good word.
All right, Lisa.
The department in position have been going through a period of growth and change to align with greater needs from the community. This includes simple changes such as uniforms and larger ones such as management of multiple staff members, including plumbing and wiring inspectors who have been somewhat independent. Can you tell us about your management and budgeting experience and share some ideas you might have for continuing to move the department in a direction that will meet the needs of a small but complex community?
The, um, all departments are going through, it seems like, growing pains the last couple of years where the economy's really took off and building's really taken off. So, a lot of departments are going through transitioning from the part-time to the full-time guys, or more town employees versus subcontract type inspectors. I have a lot of experience with part-time inspectors throughout my career in different towns, and I had a lot of experience with full-time guys. The transition is, a lot of these part-time guys have their own business, and, and it becomes hard for them to devote their full, um, knowledge and time towards the job. So, it's a fine line on, um, getting them to, to commit because they like the part-time gig, but the needs of the town come first, and sometimes, um, they have to make a choice whether they want to go full-time or if they want to stay part-time and, and take the risk of somebody else being hired in front of them. My management skills is I, I teach by example. I, I, I'm not, I'm a very soft-sell guy. I don't... I don't raise my voice. People pretty much see me as I am and follow my lead. I got a good work ethic, always work half hour before it starts. I was on the other side of the counter as a contractor for years, so I treat people like I used to be, wanted to be treated. Try to get away from the stereotypical building inspector-type scenario. I don't know if that answered your question, but it sounded good for a minute.
Budgeting?
Budgeting. The town I'm in now, I work under the assistant town manager, so I don't do the budget. But previous towns, I always did the budget for the building department, all the salaries, all the line items for travel expenses, education, the office supplies, you know, safety equipment, the typical budget like that. Nothing usually too crazy because it was only, you know, five or six inspectors and support staff.
What's been your greatest accomplishment through the years? Professional?
Professional. I worked on a lot, before I became building inspector, I worked on a lot of jobs in Boston. I have a license in Boston to build up to six-story buildings. So I did Cambridge College. That was a good accomplishment. As far as my professional career in construction, that was a, that was a big job and I felt kind of proud of myself afterwards.
Okay. Okay. Lisa, it's your turn.
The town of Berlin is currently going through a phase of intense commercial building. Please speak to your specific experience with these types of large-scale commercial inspections, your thoughts on how to manage them and how you determine staffing needs. These periods tend to be cyclical. How do you balance current needs while planning for a potential future downturn?
Privately and publicly, I have a lot of experience in commercial buildings. I started out in residential and then back in the late 80s, I worked in Boston. I became a commercial contractor in Boston. So I have a lot of experience on the commercial end. Currently, the town I'm in has four, you know, mixed-use, commercial first floor, three floors of residential-type buildings going on right now. I have a lot of experience in commercial. Predicting the future and staffing needs? You never really know, but the idea is just to take care of what's happening now and the future, the future, just like the economy, you really never know what's going to happen. I've seen projects stall for months and months and sometimes years. But it's never too far out of the realm that you can't get a grip on it.
So, Mark, what prompted you to take up this profession?
Take up the profession? Well, I got out of the service in '82 and I started out as a laborer. There was a carpenter's helper, then a carpenter, then a construction super. Then I went to Boston and became a commercial construction super. It just seemed like the next step. A quick story, I was working on a six-story building in Boston. Am I supposed to be looking at them?
No, he's looking.
I keep failing this, saying, "Look over this way."
No, because they're all looking at you.
I was working on a six-story building and meeting this guy, his name was Old Joe at the time, and he was old at the time, who were carrying doors up six flights of stairs. And I was 39 and he was in his 70s and I looked behind him, behind me, and I said, "I'm not going to be doing that when I'm 70." So then I started looking at books and reading and then took the test to become building inspector when I was 99. So that was sort of the change, realizing that I wasn't going to keep up in the construction industry as far as my body went.
Okay. All right. With the ongoing changes in the construction industry, how do you keep your knowledge current?
Keeping ears and eyes open. We have a lot of education classes that we're required to take, a certain amount of CEUs every year. You get a lot of knowledge from other building inspectors. You're talking, they run into the same kind of problems or the same issues. And not only with my Mass certification, I'm also ICC certified through the nation. I have to have special classes with them to keep on my certifications with those guys, too. So there's a lot of training. I'm going to UMass the beginning of October for three days of conference and training, updated codes and stuff like that.
Okay. Lisa?
The building department installed new online permitting software recently that includes iPads for remote use and department management requires experience with software such as Microsoft Office. What is your comfort level with technology?
Well, you're using Athaya, but... Everybody, technology is the way of the future. Everybody's doing it now. When I was in Chumsford, they went to ViewPermit. Before that, they had a system called Hawkeye. Where I'm currently now, they have ViewPermit. I'm also covering for a town on an interim basis. They have Viewpoint. So it's the way of the future. I mean, people like being able to do everything online, like, you know, especially contractors like the plumbing and electrical contractors. They'll come home at 10 o'clock at night, they can apply for a permit, you come in the next morning, sitting there waiting for you.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. That is our questions. Do you have any questions for us or anything else you'd like to add?
Like I said, I have a good work ethic. I have a lot of experience. I've been an inspector for 20 years now. I don't have any baggage, no any hangups, so what you see is what you get. And I know Richard. Richard's a great guy. I've known Richard for years, so you're not going to lose either one.
Which town are you in now?
Right now?
Yeah.
Town of Berlin.
Okay. Could not remember. All right.
What's that?
Yeah.
Well, thanks for having me.
Thank you very much for coming.
And I can tell you are a graduate of Cambridge College. Well done on the building.
Mastered?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming again. Nice seeing you again.
Yes.
Bye, everybody.
Red line to Harvard and then walk up the road.
There you go.
All right. Lisa, do you want to talk about this now or do you want to finish with the agenda and then come back to it or? Need a minute to digest?
Why don't we finish up?
Finish up?
Yeah.
The agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All righty. We're at the town administrator report.
Okay. Again, I'll try to keep it brief. I'll pull a few bullet points off of this full three-page list again.
It's getting shorter, right?
Well...
No.
It hasn't grown much. It just stays at three pages. Okay. The annual performance appraisals, we're expecting that the performance appraisals will be submitted by this Friday, October 4th. I know the board is working on several at one time, so if you're unable to complete them this week, I'll be sure to convey to the personnel committee that you are working on them and will get them compiled as soon as possible. We, I am working on the request for quotes this week and a scope of work, work for HR consultants to assist with class and comp plan updates. My concern is, and standardizing job descriptions. My concern with this is that only $8,500 was awarded through the Community Compact Grant for this, and that's likely going to get us a fraction of the work. So I intend to speak with Sean Cronin at DLS to see if there is any, if there are any monies remaining in FY '20 that they could actually supplement this grant so that they could do the full scope of work. Meanwhile, I'm putting together the scope. I have attached to the town administrators' report, which will be posted online, the capital, the updated capital submission form and the administrative procedures for capital requests and instructions. These have been distributed to all departments and the deadline to submit capital requests for FY '21 is November 1st. So there's a full month for departments to get these together. The, I met with the finance committee last week and there is a start of a draft FY '21 budget calendar guide. That's also in tonight's agenda packet materials and it'll be attached to the town administrators' report and put online with my report. This week, the administrative finance team is meeting. We're going to go over some more CPA information. The accountant has been working diligently on closing out the FY '19 books and preparing her parts of the recap. The assessors are also working on their numbers and doing their parts of the recap and will begin to prepare for the tax classification hearing with the board, hopefully before the end of this month. We expect tax bills to be mailed out by mid-November, but I'll keep the board updated on that.
Okay.
And on CPA, I'm preparing, there's, you've already seen a draft informational insert with some financial information on it. I'm preparing another side of that insert to give a history on the Community Preservation Act, the town's acceptance of the act, what the, what having CPA in Berlin would mean. So, you know, applicable uses and things like that. The, I've gotten an update on the library septic system. Evan Carloni, the volunteer project manager, has reported that soil testing is complete. So he's now evaluating the different types of systems that might be able to be put on the site. He does have to look at the areas surrounding the site to make sure that the system will be feasible. So I'll keep you posted on that as well. But the board had asked for a KP Law workshop in October on social media, website postings, open meeting law and code, and the codes of conduct. I've provided Lauren Goldberg, the managing attorney at KP, a few dates and she herself would be coming to do the workshop. So we don't have a date scheduled yet, but it would be at 6:30 PM when we can try to maximize attendance by boards and committees at this workshop. We just received word last week that CMRPC has received a $90,000 planning assistance grant from EOEEA, I'm sorry, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to create strategic village center plans in four of their member communities. Berlin is one of those communities. So we are going to be entering the planning stage for a strategic village center outline. And this is going to tie in very nicely with the projects that we have outlined in Complete Streets and ideas we have for TIP and Safe Roots to Schools. And hopefully, we'll be able to start really focusing on, on long-range planning from the town center. I've received, the board is aware that I've received or we've received a proposal of $3,200 from a consultant to support the town's interest in solar pilot agreement negotiations. I expect that we're going to be moving forward on that this coming week. And I think municipal vulnerability preparedness program, the MVP program, I am preparing templates for letters of support for various boards, committees and public safety officials and other local stakeholders to try to get in on a grant round for MVP, the MVP planning grant. So I'm working on that. That grant, the funding should be opening up imminently. I think it was supposed to open up by today. So once we get these letters of support, once I get them out to the various committees, we'll try to wrap up the towns, you know, soliciting the towns' interests before the end of the month and get them submitted. Finally, I've met with CMRPC reps and a few neighboring communities' town administrators to discuss the possibility of shared equipment and services. I did meet recently with the town administrator in Clinton and CMRPC reps. The town administrator, Mike Ward, in Clinton, did note a potential interest in sharing a bucket truck with the town of Berlin and possibly even another community if it makes geographic sense. Clinton is also in need of this equipment. CMRPC is very familiar with these types of agreements. They have actually done shared bucket truck and other heavy equipment agreements for member towns. So we're going to try to move that forward to see if there's, if there could be cost efficiency for us and there could be effective use of the bucket trucks so we could take care of our trees and Clinton could take care of theirs. I also met with CMRPC reps and the town administrator in West Boylston. West Boylston had actually advertised for a fractional facilities coordinator or facilities director position in the current fiscal year. They budgeted a small amount of money. Because it was part-time and maybe for other reasons I'm not quite sure of, they didn't really get much response for that job ad and that, and that job description. So we talked a little bit about the possibility of sharing such a position. This position could work under the highway superintendent and actually take charge of doing repairs in buildings, assessing building systems, helping with procurement, overseeing projects in all of our buildings, determining effective use of buildings. So that's something that we're, we're talking about. It's very preliminary. She said that she would bring it to her, her board as kind of an informational message and I said that I would bring it to mine. So I'm reporting that to you now and I look forward to getting some feedback from the board on that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. We have, under old business, we have fiscal year '20 Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division Competitive Grant Contract for $69,635. You want to come up, Tim?
So you're going to sign it?
What's that?
So you're going to sign it?
Well, you want to, is there anything else you want to add to this?
What would you like to know? Let's start there. I got like three or four things that I was asked to speak about today.
The three of the chair, so I asked if the energy committee could come and just kind of report on what, what got, what got us to this 60, whatever, $69,000, $70,000 grant award.
All right. So as you, as you may recall, we submitted our 2019 Green Community at the end of last year. What that was targeted at was against the school and there was a number of retrofits that were associated with that. Total project cost is $85,000 and $85,200. We were, utility incentive, $18,581 and the grant covered the balance of that, which was $66,422. So we're getting approximately $85,000 worth upgrades essentially for free to the town. What will be involved is a couple of major things, adaptive motion sensors, which will, unlike typical motion sensors, these will adapt to the ambient light. So if it's a sunny day, they'll dim the lights to save energy and keep a constant illumination in the, in the hallways and otherwise. Also included are LED lights upgrades, gym light upgrades, outdoor parking lot upgrades to LEDs. Pretty comprehensive list. There's a total of 47 line items in this contract that we're being taking care of. Each, for example, like one of them right here, parking lot lighting, round pole, 25-foot post-top parking lot light. Okay? And that, that's a, you know, 42, 4,200 hours and expected to reduce 3.9 kilowatt-hours just on that one line item. Total reduction in kilowatt-hours is six, annually is 68,817, which if you factor in about 10 cents or 11 cents per kilowatt-hour, you're talking a pretty serious amount of money from $7,000. So that's, that's what you're getting for that. This was granted to us in September. We, technically, in order to be eligible for the next round of Green Community, we have to have it done by the end of the calendar year. Highly unlikely that we would do that. Additionally, there was a second line item in this grant, which was building operator certification training. There's two individuals that we can send. We're going to break it 50-50 between the town and the school. That's about $3,000 per person in tuition and the purpose of that is to help them become better equipped to operate our buildings. And that's, that's the gist of what was approved under this grant cycle.
So, Tim, $3,000 per person or $3,000 in total?
I think it's $3,000 total. It's about, 3213 was the total grant.
So split in half?
Split in half.
Cool. Thanks.
Okay. And you are looking for a signature from us?
I am.
Correct? Yes.
So approval of the grant award. Chris will be signing all but the treasurer sheet on the back.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's a biggie.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Now, you wished me to go over the aggregation as well, or are we done?
Yes, I think the municipal, yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so we recently received our quarterly update on the municipal aggregation program. And so far since third quarter of 2018, against the basic rate, we've saved Berlin rate payers about $125,000 in cumulative, in aggregate. When you compare that against the green option, which this one is 100% green energy, that number jumps up to $370,000. The total, we have currently 948 meters that are in the program, and out of those programs, 75% of all the energy consumed is by residential. We do have some of our own meters, recently learned that, are also on this project. The good thing about this is we're about to go into the winter season when rates typically increase pretty dramatically. And based on the indicative pricing that has been posted by National Grid, we're going to substantially underrun the basic rate. Residential rates for the basic service effective November 1st running through April 30th, 2020 will be 13.982 cents for residential customers. That's against our contracted rate of 10.999 cents. So it's over, just under 3 cents per kilowatt-hour, which is pretty substantial, so a 30% reduction roughly. Commercial is 12.84, and then when you get into the industrial, I think we're Western, West Central Massachusetts, it was 11.872. The, are, any person who subscribes to our program would pay the flat 10.99 cents. So my recommendation to those who haven't joined would be now is a good time to do so. Part of the reason why these rates have gone up is because of fees that have been put on and pricing actions that the utilities have taken to upgrade the infrastructure. And when we made this determination in 2018, one of the primary purposes for doing so was to insulate the community against those price increases. So if people wish to opt in or potentially opt out, the information is on Colonial Power's website. There's a link to it off the Energy Committee page, and I would recommend opting in because they're going to do very, very well.
Do you have, or can you put together a Reader's Digest version? Because this is a lot of good information, and I don't know how many people would pop out to your page, to the Energy page, to look at it. So if we could blast it up on either the town page, Berlin Neighbors Connect, to get that out there, just get it out there, maybe even write something up, Tim. We can drop off a few copies, General Store, 19 Carter, whatever, just so that people know all the good work that you've done and the potential savings that they could do.
We could do a news item right on the homepage. And link it to the additional documents on the Energy Committee's page too, if you want to do that.
That'd be great. Then I've had a few phone calls, questions about, you know, opting into the program and then go to the web.
There was some discussion on social media that came up with that, and one of the items I wanted to question and address was, there seems to be an understanding that there was a policy statement taken in town meeting regarding the use of green energy, and I'm not aware of that actually occurring.
It was past town meeting?
I'm not sure when, but I think it was Walter who mentioned it.
I think it was a confusion with another action that was taken, but that, as far as I could find, never happened at town meeting.
You know, if there's support for that, I think the Energy Committee would probably...
Oh, do you mean Walter's post about he got this thing, this letter in the mail and don't do this? Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, because when we went through this, there was a lot of discussion on whether we wanted to go with the 100% green option or not. So if that was, I just wanted to know if that was in place, that would have made the question simpler.
No, I think that was just his opinion. That's why I prefer for you to come up with something that, here it is, here's the savings, here's what you got to do.
Yep, and...
I think actually, isn't, aren't they going to send out a letter shortly?
Yeah, the letter is going out here.
So after you meet? I think after you meet and have some discussion.
Well, the one thing that we do need to discuss is, the last time the Energy Committee met, we did approve an additional adder. We had suspended the adder while we were sorting out our funding option. Once we went through town meeting and got our stabilization fund approved, we meant to revisit that. We recommended a .2 cent, so it would be rather than 1.1...
Two tenths of a cent?
Two tenths of a cent. Previously, it was one tenth of a cent. I don't feel that our board has the authority to request that, so that would have to occur through an action of your board. So we would request that you take that under advisement and render a decision.
Through the chair, is that a request that'll come in writing from the Energy Committee to the board to take that up with...
It's, we voted on it, and it's in our minutes, so I guess I can make this a formal request to do so, however you want to handle it, but that was something. And we're down to three members. It's getting extremely difficult to have meetings with Quorum, so anything that could be done to get us additional help would be greatly appreciated.
That would be a public service announcement right here.
Yes, it's, I'm the only one here right now, so, you know. We could use some assistance.
So your recommendation was the .2?
Two tenths of one cent per kilowatt-hour.
Okay.
Previously, it was one tenth of a cent, and part of the reason we did that is because we did do very well in, in underrunning, and also we would like to make up for the time that we were saving.
And that would be used to invest in additional energy efficiency projects?
The way that that works is all funds that's collected through that adder would be rolled into a stabilization fund that was approved at the last town meeting. That funds would be collected within that fund and only be withdrawn based on action of town meeting.
By two-thirds vote.
And the purpose that was defined there was to comply with the mission of the Green Communities Program.
Should we be adding this to perhaps the next agenda?
Yes.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Question for you before you go. You said a letter was going out?
Each, I believe it's annually, as part of the program, we have to put a public notice out, and I believe an email either came in today or within the last 48 hours that that was taking place. I think one of the things that they are waiting on is the determination of whether or not we wish to proceed with an adder.
Right.
We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. This is a makeup meeting because, again, we haven't had Quorum. I don't know whether that'll happen. I don't have an indication of whether I have people. If we do that, I can reconfirm the adder amount at that time. If not, we'll have to go with our last voted action.
Because the reason that I ask is that, I don't know, you know, like when information goes out to the public, there's all sorts of questions, you know, social media, enough said. Where we're having our coffee talk, would it be possible that if something comes up, that we could ask you to stand in the crowd and maybe share some information and clear confusion? I don't need an answer. That's fine, just something to think about. But I just don't want people going, "Oh, well, I believe it's this way. Oh, no, well, I believe it's this way," and neither want to write.
Okay.
Yeah, there is actually too, a lot of information about this. He's already written up something on the program that is up on the website. So it's not like...
And there's a whole section on Colonial's webpage, what it means, how the state complies, what the town does.
And they make sure to keep people very well informed.
Okay.
And that should be in the mailing, the link to that should be there in addition to the written material, and I believe it's colonialpower.com/berlin.
Okay.
If memory serves.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it. Keep us posted on your meeting.
Thank you.
All right. We are at appointments. Berlin Police Department. Did you want to come up or...
I can come up.
All righty.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, please.
Chief, I guess. Did you get a copy of the actual recommendation?
Of that one, no.
Or the liquor policy, you mean?
No, that.
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few things.
Okay, so you...
Where do we want to start? So I think we had three things. We had the, kind of two transitions, I guess, more than appointments with police officers. I'll start with Officer Welch. So Thomas Welch was a reserve officer here for a number of years with us, beginning of September. He stepped down. It was time. He served quite a long time here. Prior to that, he was also a reserve officer in Boylston and was a full-time deputy sheriff with the Wisconsin Sheriff's Department. So it's kind of time for him to move on to the next phase of his life. But what I am asking is that he be appointed as a special officer, possibly have the ability to do a detail now and again. He never really even did them as a reserve officer, just worked shifts. But I think more importantly, to kind of keep him around, any of you, if you had the opportunity to meet him, he is quite the calming influence around the station, and, you know, always available to us at Memorial Day, which is very important. So it would just kind of keep him as part of our, our department and keep his influence there.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Okay, or hear a second?
Seconded and a half question.
Okay, go ahead.
Impacted budget?
Zero.
Okay.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second one is Officer Davis in Tenno, who is a special officer in our chaplain right now, had been a reserve officer, a part-time officer. And for various personal reasons, we had some discussions, and he stepped down. We never filled that position, so we saw throughout the summer months especially, some struggles filling shifts with full-time openings that we had. You know, and that actually had a huge impact to the budget. We ended up spending a lot more on overtime versus part-time staff because we didn't have a number of part timers that we had been at. So he and I have never lost contact, and he's someone that's, has remained a member of our department. But what I'm asking is that he may be reinstated as a part-time officer, so transition from a special officer back to a, a part-time officer will have the ability to work shifts to help us out.
What's the difference between special versus part-time?
Special officers are, in a lot of ways, more ceremonial, but they're still, they still maintain their standards. They don't work out in the patrol cars. They do some traffic details, and then they're available for us for special events and things like that, like Memorial Day. But historically, there's been a long list of special officers here. I pared that down in the first couple of years I was here. It seemed like everyone that had served the police department at one time or another all of a sudden became a special officer, and there was a list of 20 or 30 people, some of which I've never met, so.
Impacted budget?
This hopefully will help us by reducing the amount of overtime and actually paying for shift coverage for part-time wages. I would then expect, I sent Margaret a, another job posting to go to personnel to fill the position that was vacated by Officer Welch to add another part-time officer, so we maintain that level of staffing to kind of reduce overtime and pay part-time wages versus the overtime wages.
Okay, any other...
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Questions, comments? All in favor? And you are asking us to...
Yep, to designate myself and all of the full-time officers as agents of the board for liquor license enforcement, liquor enforcement. We've been in a transition with that right now, and I think one of the things where we lack is the ability for day-to-day enforcement. It really falls back on the board. There's no one out there to be able to do things. And we've had incidents in the past where, you know, we've just kind of written some things up and sent it to the board. But this will allow us in an official capacity to assist you with licensing, do some background investigation work, but then also be out there as an enforcement end for you as well.
Okay.
So can we talk about, while we're talking about that, we can ask? All right, I have some questions. Shocking. So in Section 63, it talks about such licensing authorities, or their agents may at any time take samples for analysis. So I guess the first question is, why would they do that?
If you're taking like alcohol samples to see if the product is what they're advertising, you may get someone who is refilling bottles. So they're taking a top-shelf liquor bottle and filling it with a lesser product.
Ah, okay. And so the follow-on questions is, what sort of record-keeping? Because obviously, you wouldn't want a restaurant, whatever, to say, "Oh, Berlin's been here every day for the past five weeks," and some other license says, "Ha, they never came by." So how would that be monitored?
Yeah, I think this is something that we would work out on what we would want, what type of enforcement, what type of compliance, compliance checks we would want to do as a whole. I don't think this is something that we would run rogue on, to say, "We're going to check on this place every single day." You know, it would be something that we would work out together and, and figure out what would be the best for the town.
So would the businesses that are impacted by this, would they be notified?
So this depends on what the compliance check is. You know, having watched how we did things in, you know, my previous community, at times we would notify businesses that during this month, we'll be doing, you know, ID checks, we'll be doing compliance checks. Other times, we didn't, depending on how things went. You know, if people did really bad when we notified them, we may not notify them again. We may go in and just do compliance checks and see how people are doing on databases. You know, really what we're looking for in doing compliance checks is making sure that people are doing the right thing when nobody's watching. You know, that's really what it's all about.
Yeah, and if you tell them they're coming, you're coming in, then...
Correct, and they're going to be on their best behavior, yeah.
There were so many, through the chair, there are so many things that the agents or the local licensing authority can check for. You can check to see if they're using the premises as been, you know, as it's been represented to the local licensing authority. You could see if they are staying open, serving patrons after, after their license hours are, are over at night. So there are so many different things that, that could be checked for compliance.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do we, we need a vote to approve? To approve the list? All right.
Ten of them? Seconded.
Okay. Did you have another question?
So the two...
Well, I just heard you take a breath.
Yes, thank you. So the two officers that we're putting back into rotation, are they going to be on this list?
No, it's only the full-time officers.
Okay.
Not all the part-time and reserve officers.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm done.
Okay, and you seconded the motion?
I did.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Was there anything else we were going to ask Tom while he's here?
Well, I don't know if he wants to stick around for the guidelines for liquor licensing, so he might want to. You might want to bump that up. That's under, that's at the end of...
Approval of the guidelines for applying for liquor licenses?
Yes.
That one?
That one.
All right.
Why don't we do that while Tom is here? Excuse, excuse me, through the chair, these appointments that you just made, the designations, this is going to be an annual, with the annual appointments.
All right. We did get a approval from Brian Riley at KP Law on the policy or procedures, if everybody had a chance to look at them. All right. Seems to me there was, I had a question about 8D. Or maybe it is here. Last page. It just looked like it, there might be a typo in there?
For zoning board of appeals? Down, automatic. Wait a minute.
Oh, from the Select Board of Selectmen webpage? Is that how you meant to write that, or how it was meant to be written?
I think that was intended to be written Board of Selectmen webpage.
Okay, that was it. Gotcha. All right, that makes sense.
Have you seen these already, Tom, or not?
I have, yeah, yeah.
Okay, got any comments?
No, I just think this is, this is going to be beneficial to have, you know, having us now as your agents and having some, some investigation on our part prior to issuing a license makes a lot of sense. a lot of sense. The Fire Marshal and I had some discussion just quickly before the meeting, that they're kind of listed and these other groups are listed, that, you know, people that may need to be in the process, how are we going to enforce or document if they are required?
The inspectors?
The inspectors, yeah.
So, we, this is just the very beginning. We're going to have to start, we're going to have to prepare forms and other supplemental policies to go along with these very basic policies to assure consistency and the right inspections moving forward. So, that's something that we're going to have to develop. It's not something we're going to wing, but the board has quite a few more liquor licensing-related policies that need to be established.
Okay. Excellent. Okay.
Dave, did that answer your question?
Okay. Any other questions?
You're approving this tonight, right?
Yep. Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Tom. We also have Deborah Rolfe that would like to be appointed to the Cultural Counsel, Council for a term expiring May 31, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we've got.
Do I need to sign this? Do you have something more official?
I bet you you do. You do.
Yeah, they're probably over there, though.
See?
It was under here? Yes, there you go.
This Margaret wasn't paying attention earlier. It has now drifted down the end of the table to the other Margaret. Just saying.
Was there, was there one that we needed to sign on?
Appointments?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh, yes.
Yes.
Now, I'm. Those, thank you, those can go to Peg. Okay. I think we're caught up at the moment.
Just the two that Tom brought us. Thank you. See, we could end up with no signature on these papers anywhere, couldn't we?
Mary will track us down.
Yep.
Or Eloise.
There's one. Thank you. All right. And we've got approval of street opening permits requested by EverSource Energy for 237 and 243 Gates Pond Road.
These, through the chair, these have gone through all of the required local inspections and have been signed off by the Highway Superintendent and the Police Chief and are ready for the board's approval. This is for the installation, yeah, this is for the installation of gas lines. A sketch has been provided. I don't know if you, you must have that in your packet. Okay. So, the packet is all together and ready to be executed.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's for the entire board signature. Oops. I'm going to keep my agenda. that they, COA has approved?
Yes. The COA has approved every policy now that's been, that's been before it for the Council on Aging Van. So, everything has now gone through Council on Aging. The job description, the van driver job description, has been approved by both the Council on Aging and the Personnel Committee. So, the board is the last stop for that one. And with the remaining policies, we just need the board's approval.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of these?
No, these are the same ones that we started with.
Yes.
Yes.
Months ago.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done. Thank you. Thanks for your whole pushing this through.
And Margaret was telling me that the meeting, was it last week? COA meeting last week? Went very well?
Yes. That was, yeah, that was my takeaway from the meeting. I thought it went well. It was a good conversation. They talked about different programs, different policies.
Great. New business. Town contracts and grants policy and procedures.
So, this is a draft policy and procedure on the processing of town contracts and grants. This is for the board's first reading, so I do ask that by Wednesday, if you have any comments, please let me know. This is hopefully going to help with consistency in processing grant applications, assuring that they get to the town accountant and other town officials that should have copies of these. And it should also help clarify the authority to execute town contracts. So, that's the entire purpose of this policy and procedure. So, please let me know if you've got feedback on these. And once the board acts on them, they'll be distributed with a summary of how the process should go.
Do you want comments tonight or in writing?
You can give them to me in writing tonight, if you want.
Oh, good luck. I'll walk you through my, I'll walk you through my chicken scratch, you know, so, okay.
I'll take them whenever you have them all done.
Okay.
Yeah, I had scribbled on mine, too.
Okay.
So, are there any more board questions and comments? You got one more?
One more.
All right.
And Margaret, you and I had kind of sort of talked about this, but I wanted to bring it up before the whole board. So, just wanted to get the board's thought on letting the little kids in town Halloween decorate the front of the town offices or maybe the lobby? Well, Sharon's already done the lobby, so maybe the front of the building. I don't know what liability, insurance. I'm just trying to think of like community activities that you could sanction a certain day and send out a note to say, "Hey, bring me down, your old cobwebs, skeletons," you know, and you could, and it's safe because it's off the road here. Maybe go up against the building there. Didn't know. Just wanted to throw it out for an idea. Didn't know if I should toss it by rec, you know, what they had, or too far-fetched. Don't need an answer now, but maybe by next week, if you want to mull it over. Margaret's like, hmm.
Well, so, I've given you some thoughts. So, in other towns that I've worked in, and in fact, the town that my kids grew up in, they would have, to try to actually keep the kids off of dark streets, they would actually have town sanctioned events where they would do, you know, they would do a hayride, they would serve, you know, hot cocoa and, you know, do little donuts or whatever. So, they'd have kids all in one area. So, the whole area would be festive and look like Halloween and fall. But that doesn't, and then in my most recent town in Amherst, they would do a daytime Halloween parade with the kids coming through the town offices, trick-or-treating or, so, it's done differently in different towns. It's.
Well, I did reach out to Julie and Tammy and they have some things percolating with the school that aren't official yet, so, you know, don't really want to say anything. But, you know, I didn't know if we could kind of toss them out this way, because there was a house, for those of you who remember, Munyon's House, right at the corner, that every Halloween, it was decorated with coffins that opened and things like that. And I think the people in town miss it. You know, it's just not there anymore, so didn't know if there was something that we could kind of do here. I think there's enough traffic that probably goes whizzing up Linden Street that could see and it'd be like, oh.
Well, Clinton does a trick-or-treat down their main street.
Well, I know, but, well, we really don't have a lot to trick-or-treat. And the folks up in Sawyer, but the folks at Sawyer Hill do.
They do a beautiful.
Fabulous job.
Trick-or-treat up at the old housing.
Right. And I've reached out to a couple of folks up there to see if there's a possibility of doing a parade. Haven't really gotten a lot of response, so.
And I don't know how much time that they designate on Halloween or the day they, you know, I don't know what the policies are at the school anymore, as far as kids dress up or not. I don't know. Some have done away with that.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll stay in touch with Julie and see what's.
I'm sure she can tell you.
Going to go for it. Yeah. Just waiting on some final decisions from the principal.
Yeah, I, as far as, as far as liability and decorating here, I think as long as it's, as long as it's modest and not a, an injury hazard or a fire hazard, we could potentially do something.
Okay.
So, and, you know, I don't know. I haven't been here at Halloween yet, so I don't know if staff dresses up.
Hey, staff.
I have pumpkin earrings.
Staff of Selectmen have been known to dress up and come to meetings, just saying.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'll keep you posted. Want to find out?
I did have one question for the board. We're doing our evaluations, we're working on our evaluations now of those that report to the Selectmen, which I'm asking you, is that going to include our TA, Margaret, as far as?
Your first six weeks on the job?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I think it's a little early.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure.
I'm always, I always will be.
Give her six months.
Well, I mean, January will be six months, correct? Is that about right?
January will be six months.
Yeah. So, do we want to just hold off on that and do the ones we're entitled to? And you're welcome to give feedback to Margaret if you'd like.
And I'm happy to accept feedback, so that always helps, that always helps with performance, I think.
Okay.
Continuous feedback.
All right. That was my question. So, we do have need for, well, no, we're not done yet, are we? We need to have a little discussion on our interviews. So, I think we had two very good candidates. It was good to see, because I hear it's really difficult to find good building inspector or building commissioner candidates. And we had how many? You interviewed four, correct?
We interviewed four. We had six people apply. We interviewed four. And these were unanimously, Richard and Mark Dupell, were unanimously chosen or recommended to move on to the board for final interviews.
Yeah. Okay. So, I want to hear from the board.
It was interesting when I asked about why they got into this profession. Both of them really had similar stories.
Yeah, they did.
Where Mark didn't want to be the 70-year-old guy lugging up the door and Richard didn't want to be, you know, knew that his body was going to give out. So, it was just kind of nice to hear that both of them had similar.
Must be something that's common, perhaps, in that.
Correct.
Industry, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that both of them are relatively experienced. I felt as though perhaps, Richard said he had 22 years of budgeting experience. I don't, if that's the whole entire, I'd have to look back at the resume to see how many years exactly he.
Yeah, I think they both had a lot of budgeting experience. I don't think that's a differentiator right there.
Well, except that Mark did not have budgeting, budgeting, is not doing the budget presently.
No, but he'd done it for years in the other positions, so it's not, that's not something that's different between the two of them, really, I don't think.
Yeah, I was a little concerned about, when you asked your question about staffing needs and the, I didn't feel as though the answer was covered.
I'm not sure my questions in general were covered horribly well.
Yeah. Because I think his comment was.
Once again, not a differentiator, because neither one of them covered them very well.
Well, the.
Sorry.
The comment was that you never really know. And that's, that's.
The forward.
Not a good, good answer.
Yeah. I would agree.
Both the, let's see. I was a little impressed with the number of hours that Richard said that he was doing in continuing education. If it's only required to have 45, and he said he's doing around 120.
120 to 160.
Yeah. I mean, and he's reading books in the grass about building code.
While listening to band music.
Great.
Well, I mean, what I liked about Richard, too, is that he seemed to be very cognizant of people that he would need, you know, that he seemed a little hesitant to say, even though one was budgeted, do we really need that? You know, the person. So, he seems very focused on, here's the work, here's what we need to get done. No, I don't want to strip it down to the bare minimum, but at the same time, too, I just don't want to make a body, a body to have a job to take money that's in a budget. So, I like the fiscal responsibility around that comment.
You do have to be careful, though. Just, I'm not saying, but he has insider knowledge.
Agreed.
It's a hard thing.
Yeah.
It's a hard thing, but you could almost generalize it to say, yeah, Brolin is growing. You know, you've got apartments going up left and right, you know, down there. And it's easy for us to say, because we're behind the big comfy table, but, you know, for someone on that side to say, you know, I'd want to look at what's coming up and down the road and I would want to try to forecast and I would want to try to look at and I would want to try to gather information, you know, which would almost like negate Richard having the insight, skinny on what's going on in town versus the, somebody coming in from the outside and saying, what do I need to do to learn about the town and what my resources are going to be for that?
Both of them had good answers on the skills needed to be a building commissioner. Richard said he'd need to get to know the town, the small town and the people and help the customers. And Mark said you need patience, education, and experience. So, they're both.
Well, what I liked, too, about Richard is that he said when he was in Townsend, that he held workshops on the energy and code training. So, that's just kind of like taking the job one step further, that even though, obviously, I mean, the obvious answer is, yes, I need to be patient, yes, I need to work with the public, yes, I need to work with everybody, other people want to do it. That's, that should be the answer. But, you know, Richard, whether he meant to or not, kind of took it further to say, oh, well, this is what I did because I knew people needed it. So, almost anticipating needs in the town.
I was very impressed by the, your question to both the candidates about what are you most proud of? And Richard said he's proud of bringing stability to different communities, which he has done in several cases. And just the ability to help people. You know, it just says a lot about the person. That's about all I had in my notes. Anybody else?
I mean, it's, when you look at where both of them work. I mean, it's when you look at where both of them work, you know, you could see Richard seems to be more geared towards smaller communities like ours where Mark is more Tingsborough, Bill Ricker, Newton, Woburn. So you definitely have...
Motion to approve, Richard.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, impressed with the candidates. Impressed with both, that pool, anyway. So we do have need for an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, with exemption number two, conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the building commissioner, and exemption seven, vote to approve executive session meeting minutes, and we will return to open session thereafter, only to adjourn.
Wow.
How sad. Do I hear a roll call vote?
Saki, aye.
Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.
All right.